Meeting of the Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:00 PM on January 8, 2019. Because this is the organizational meeting of the board, I will preside temporarily until the board chair is elected. Now, I'll ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our next item is the adoption of the agenda. Everyone receive the agenda via Board Docs, may have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Next on the agenda is, are my comments. First of all, I hope everyone had a wonderful, wonderful break. And, you know, prior to break, we were very busy getting to the break time, but we got there, so many activities in our schools and so many great things happening. You know, something that, if you haven't seen it, or haven't gone to at least one of them, the Passion Fairs, that is put on by our gifted students, and they just do absolutely wonderful projects, and basically, they do, they do the projects, you go, and they actually will present to you as an individual their projects. And I've been to several schools, we have a few more schools that are still presenting their projects over the next few weeks, but just real excited about that. Also, right before break, I finished up our fall leadership meetings, and I'm about to start with the faculty meetings for this semester. I think our first faculty meetings next week, and they go for about six weeks where I'll visit every faculty. And in fact, this year, I will take Mr. Krantz with me, and he's, one thing we always do is we go through the budget and talk about the budget and what it's looking like and what we're proposing. So he will help me with that this year. And tomorrow night, if you're not doing anything, the Battle of the Burgs, the girls play at 5:30 and the boys at 7:00, or shortly after that. And that will be at Blacksburg High School tomorrow night. And so come on out and watch our kids, girls and boys, play basketball tomorrow night. It's always a fun, exciting time, so anyway. All right, next on the agenda is the reorganization of the school board. And so our first business is the election of the board chair. Anyone on the board may nominate another board member for the chair. A nomination does not require a second. Once nominations are complete, I'll ask for a motion to close nominations. This motion must be seconded and voted on by the board. We will then vote on each nominee in the order of their nomination. So, do I have a nomination for the chair of Montgomery County School Board?
I nominate Ms. Karan.
Okay, we have a nomination for Ms. Karan as our board chair. Are there any other nominations? Let's see, so we have no more nominations, and so we will close the nominations at this, at this point. Let's see. All right, we will now vote on nominees for, on the nominee.
We need a motion to close.
Sorry, Dr. Meyer.
We need a motion.
Can we have a motion to close nominations?
Close, okay. Gosh, still messed it up. May I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's closed. All right, next, we will now vote on the nominee, our only nominee was Ms. Karan. All in favor of Ms. Karan for.
Roll call, please.
I have it.
So when you go to say, "All in favor," you say, "Mr. Drake, will you please do roll call?" That's what Ms. Froggett is asking.
Okay, I just haven't finished with my sentence, okay? All those in favor of Karan for a chair of the board, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Roll call. I requested a roll call. That was my point.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
I'd like, I think this is the only time that I have an opportunity to say something, so I'd like to explain my vote before I vote. Is that the appropriate time to do so?
Sure.
So, I think that board chair seems to be the thankless job within the wider thankless job of serving on the school board, and I think that Ms. Karan has done a great, a great job, and has represented us well in the community and schools and to other boards. I think there's some years when maybe nobody wants to do this job. And I think that, as I understand it, this year, we're, we're actually lucky to have, we had multiple people that were probably interested in doing this, this job, and were qualified. I think different people bring different strengths and weaknesses to, to this position and to our board, and I think that we, as a board, should be doing our best, when we have the opportunity to have multiple people who are interested, to, to rotate those people, who are willing and qualified, when possible, give them a chance, build new leadership in the board. I think that makes us a stronger board. I think it helps us to serve the interests of our staff and our students as best we can. I don't know if sometimes we focus a little too much on personalities or what, but I do think we're getting a little bit better about that. But, once again, I would have loved to maybe do something of a, of a rotation. I think after three years on the board for Ms. Karan, I think this year was probably the right time to, to maybe have somebody else who could step up. So, having said all that, I have a very hard time voting against Ms. Karan, because I do like her very much, and, and I like the job she's doing, and I hope that she would do it in the future, too. So, I'm gonna abstain from, from voting.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Mr. Tribaka pretty much echoed all of my sentiments, so I, too, will be abstaining.
Ms. Graham?
I agree with Mr. Tribaka. I abstain as well.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so the motion does carry, and I will be now turning the meeting on to Mrs. Karan.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the nomination and also the votes of confidence, and I understand the colleagues that abstained, and I am looking forward to working together another, another great year, and with one goal in mind, and it always has been my goal, is to provide the best, or help to provide, best education, public education possible for all the kids in Montgomery County. So with that, I hope 2019 will be a great year for all of us, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone. Now, we have to continue to our reorganization of the school board. That will be the election of a vice chair. As with the election of the board chair, anyone on the board may nominate another board member. A nomination does not require a second. Once nominations are complete, I will ask for motion to close the nomination, and this motion must be seconded and voted by the board. We will then vote on each nominee in the order of their nomination. May I have a nomination for the vice chair?
Madam Chair, I nominate Marty Graham.
Are there any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Yeah, may I have a motion? May I have a motion to close the nominations?
I'm making the motion.
Oh, you're making the motion, thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, motion and second. All those in favor?
I'm actually gonna request a roll call on this one as well.
Sure. When you're ready, we will now vote on the nominee.
When we do the vote, I want the roll call.
Okay.
So we, do you want a roll call to close nominations?
No, just make it, when we do the actual voting.
Yes, yeah, I understand that. So we will now, for first, to close the nomination, all those in favor, please say yes.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Our nomination is closed. Now we will have the vote for our Marty Graham as a vice chair for the board. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Froggett?
Yeah, I'd like to also take this opportunity, first of all, to say, it's rare that I actually agree with the currently former chair of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Tuck, but he gave a very eloquent speech back in December about the importance of leadership rotation, as Mr. Tribaka indicated, and so I'm very honored to step aside and give someone else the opportunity, and I wholeheartedly support Marty Graham and vote yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Here's where it gets tough.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
The next one is our appointment of our clerk. May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Brenda Drake as the clerk of the board?
So moved.
Whoa, I said it was gonna be a hard one.
We're all excited. We have motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Drake. Now we appoint Ms. Drake as our clerk of the Montgomery County School Board for 2019. The next one is appointment of the deputy clerk for the Montgomery County School Board. May I have a motion to appoint Ms. Becky Shanks and Dr. Mark Meyer as deputy clerks of the board?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Shanks and Dr. Meyer are appointed deputy clerks of the board for 2019. Next will be adoption, and let's see, make sure I'm not skipping, adoption of resolution affirming our officers of the county school board of the Montgomery County. I need a motion to adopt a resolution affirming our officers as Gunnin Crown for board chair, Marty Graham for vice chair, Brenda Drake as clerk, Becky Shanks as deputy clerk, and Dr. Mark Meyer as deputy clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We reaffirm our officers. The next item is board committee appointments. Historically, the board chair has made appointments or sought volunteers for other committees and the boards. This year's committee appointments include two members for liaisons to Board of Supervisors, one VSPA voting delegate, one VSPA alternate, and one liaison to Southwest Virginia Governor's School, and two liaisons for the Education Foundation. As naturally, for the Board of Supervisor liaison chair and vice chair will be attend that, and Education Foundation will continue to have Ms. Froggett and Ms. Graham. So in between, we have VSPA voting delegate, VSPA alternate, and I know Mr. Tribaka had concerns about having another volunteer for that, so it's, it's open to your desires and, and volunteerism at this time for those three.
I'm sorry, what were the, the VSPAs?
VSPA voting delegate. I know Ms. Graham said she will continue, but we will.
If somebody else is interested.
Yeah, we will.
What I was gonna say, and I definitely do not want to step on Ms. Bond's toes in any way, but moving away from the Governor's School, I'm still, I have some interest anyway in getting more involved on the legislative side, so I would be happy to be the alternate if, if Ms. Bond agrees, but if she would prefer to be the delegate, the alternate, that's fine by me.
I actually have a question when we get through everything about where I might, would like to serve a little. You know, there's not been a lot, and if now's the proper time, I can mention it, but, you know, we've, we've often talked, and I brought it up before, about, and I don't know that I could go to every meeting they have, but I, I think it's important that we sometimes go to some of the town meetings, and I know Christiansburg had changed theirs, in order for the school board to be more involved with town council or town council if they need be. That doesn't mean they have to come every time, that doesn't mean we have to go every time. I think that would be wonderful. And I wouldn't mind taking that on myself. I can't say I can go every meeting they've got, but, you know, say, once a month, once every other month, to be able to go and to see, you know. I think any attendance will be, be good to. Yeah, and, you know, even if there's nothing going on, just sometimes it's a face there from our community, I mean, you know. But if no one thinks that's important, I don't have to, it's just an idea that I thought would be, you know. I think that's a great, great idea.
Are the Blacksburg ones still on Tuesdays? Do they conflict with us sometime?
They are, they don't, I don't think they always conflict.
Isn't every other, they do like evening, daytime, evening, daytime?
They have work, they have work sessions in the daytime, yeah, so.
I would be willing to do the Blacksburg side, at least the day ones that don't conflict.
Yeah, the ones that can get to, I mean. Yeah, that would be wonderful. We can add, we can add those positions to our general committee appointments. That's a great idea. Especially since Christiansburg's kinda on the map right now, you know, I mean, that's how you kinda change ideas, get people excited. Get in touch with public. That's a link. Absolutely. Now, getting back to the, so.
I will be VSPA alternate.
Alternate, and how about the, for voting delegate? Ms. Graham will continue, or any other takers?
Anybody else is welcome to, I'll be glad to do it again.
Oh, well, I think he said he wanted to do it.
You want to do the member or the alternate?
Alternate.
Yeah.
I was gonna do the alternate.
Okay, that's fine.
You'll be, would, are you interested in, to be the voting delegate?
I could do either. Whichever one Mr. Tribaka would rather have.
I'm happy to let Ms. Parton be the alternate.
You always can talk about it, that who is gonna be able to make the meeting, and, you know, you, you have, we're more than welcome both of you making the meeting, but if one cannot, the other can cover, so we will.
If you wanna, if you wanna become the VSPA voting delegate, that'd be fine, too. You do have to be at that.
No, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass on that one, I was, I like to ease my way into some of these things, but.
So, Ms. Parton, you're okay for the voting delegate?
Yes, that's fine.
And you'll be okay with the alternate delegate at this time?
Sure, yeah.
That's all good? Yeah. That's great. And for the Southwest Virginia Governor's School, do I have a volunteer? I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to go, I did it in the past. I can cover with you if you still wanna have a, you know, chance to go once or twice.
Sure, I think, if you wanna, I don't wanna sign up for it this time, but, but yeah, I would be happy to fill in when whoever.
And Mark, I was gonna say, if we wanted to have two alternates for that, 'cause I know that's a, that's during the day, and I know that's kinda hard for us who have the daytime jobs. So if we had maybe a couple alternates to where maybe one could, could go to one each time, that would, that would be a possibility, that would make things easier.
And there's no requirement to be the same person, the way they wrote their bylaws, it can be any member.
Any member of our board.
One of us will show up.
And it's once a quarter, right?
Once a quarter, so that's four times a year.
And the next one is March 5th at 2:00, I believe.
I think that that's right.
We can decide who be able to go, and since there's enough time, I think we can make that decision.
Good idea.
Well, thank you. I think that covers, I hope we were clear, Ms. Drake, with all the positions. I know you're typing.
I can re, I can restate them.
Sure.
For the purpose of the motion. So I have Board of Supervisors Liaison, Gunnin Karan and Marty Graham, VSPA Voting Delegate, Dana Parton, VSPA Alternate, Mark Tribaka, Southwest Virginia Governor's School, Gunnin Karan, Mark Tribaka and Dana Parton, Montgomery County Educational Foundation, Connie Froggett and Marty Graham, Town of Christiansburg Liaison, does that wording sound appropriate?
I like that word.
I think that's a good one.
Jamie Bond, Town of Blacksburg Liaison, Connie Froggett.
That's wonderful, yeah.
Okay, so we are ready for a motion whenever you are.
May I have a motion to approve all those appointments?
On the Southwest Virginia Governor's School, is it, it's probably sufficient to just have one, because I think anybody can fill in.
So just to name a primary?
Just name a primary, and anybody, any one of us can fill in if the primary can't make it. I think is probably the cleaner.
Okay, so do you wanna be the primary, or do you?
I was gonna let you do it.
I can be the primary, and if I can make it, I will yell for help. Okay, sounds good. I have the motion, may I have approval for those committee appointments? We are all good?
We didn't get a motion.
Oh, so moved, second.
Thank you. Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
I got lost.
Do we have to?
I'm sorry, I didn't get it. I thought Mr. Tribaka was making the motion. If there was a second, I didn't hear it. I apologize.
I think I made the motion a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right, we're good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are good.
Okay, and so, since we no longer have a member for the insurance, I would still like to have the first opportunity to be able to attend our insurance meetings.
We'll make a note at for insurance meetings. The next item is adoption of resolution, appointing agent and deputy agent for signing claims. I have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the superintendent, and in his absence, the assistant superintendent of operations to serve as agent and deputy agent for signing claims.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adopt a resolution. May I have a motion to adopt, may I have a motion to adopt the deputy superintendent as the primary superintendent designee, and in their absence, the assistant superintendent for operations as the secondary superintendent designee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions, discussion on that? Now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next one is our scheduled meeting dates, time and location. Our next item is set the date of the meetings. The meeting calendar is provided for your information at Board Docs. May I have a motion to approve 2019 meeting calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second, with a question. Has the Board of Supervisors agreed at that joint session?
I would hope so. Dr. Meyer?
I, I know that we have shared that date with Mr. Meadows, and I think he gave us the date, didn't he?
Yes, sir, he did.
So I don't know if he's.
So we should be on their calendar next week when they do all this?
Yes, mine is changing.
Okay, just, just curious.
Yeah.
Follow up, just to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussions on the calendar?
Gunnin, were we going to make the 19th, the legislative breakfast deal?
That's correct, yes, and no other meeting that.
Right, correct.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a calendar. Next item is the adoption of our hiring practices resolution. May I have a motion to adopt a hiring practices resolution approved by the board in 1992 and adopted annually since that time?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions and discussion regarding that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. The next one is adoption of board procedures, code of ethics and standards of conduct. Annually, the school board revisits the board procedures, standards of conduct and code of ethics as noted in policy 1-1.6. May I have a motion to reaffirm this policy?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any questions regarding that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We reaffirm our board procedures. The next item is the reaffirmation of school board protocols. The school board initially affirmed protocols in 1998. Last year, we revised these protocols during our board retreat. Before we take an action on these protocols, I would like to read them aloud. Number one is the relationship with each other. Members of the school board are reminded of the protocols outlined in the board procedures, code of ethics and standards of conduct approved by the board at its reorganization meeting in January. Board members are encouraged to share information from constituents from outside their voting districts with the corresponding board member where appropriate. Two, relationship with the superintendent. Members of the school board are encouraged to communicate with the superintendent regularly and interact frequently as their time permits. The superintendent will always remember to share all relevant information with all the board members. The superintendent, when bringing new policies forward, will make sure to establish a process which includes time for board member discussion, questions and reflection. Three, relationship with district employees. Members of the school board should seek information through the superintendent or deputy superintendent. Board members are reminded that individually, they have no authority to direct staff, but that all the authority is vested in the board as a whole. Board members are encouraged, however, to expand their knowledge of successes and challenges within all district buildings through visitations and other means. Board members are encouraged to inform the superintendent's office when making visits to schools and setting up meetings with principals. Four, relationship with the Board of Supervisors. Members of the school board are encouraged to continue to provide a heightened awareness of activities in and information about the school system and individual schools to the Board of Supervisors. School board members are also encouraged to receive information from the Board of Supervisors in the like manner. Five, the relationship with members of the community. Members of the school board are encouraged to receive information from community members and seek out information, but avoid expressing a final decision or proposing a solution until they are at the board table in open meetings. Board members are also encouraged to direct members of the community with specific concerns to appropriate staff by following the chain of command. All personal complaints and criticism received by the board or individual members will be directed to superintendent. May I have a motion to reaffirm these protocols?
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Any questions, discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have our protocols. The next item will reaffirmation of mission, vision, core values and our statement of inclusivity. May I have a motion to reaffirm the mission statement, vision statement, core values and our statement of inclusivity for the school division?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions and discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We reaffirm our mission, vision and core values. The next item will be adoption of resolution authorizing the superintendent to settle claims against the school board. I need a motion to approve a resolution granting authority to the division superintendent to authorize settlement of claims against the school board.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item will be announcement regarding availability of our policy manual. The MCPS policy manual is available on the MCPS website at www.mcpss.org, and printed copies are also available to citizens as needed by contacting the clerk of the board. Now that, I think, wraps up our reorganization part. Next item is the public address. At this time, in each of our regularly scheduled meeting, board sets aside, sets aside up the 30 minutes for citizen to address the board about issues pertaining public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when three minutes has passed. I do not have any individuals sign up. Is there anyone else wishes to address the board from the audience at this time? You don't wanna address Mr. Lyons? I don't see anybody, Dan, my public, I don't hear from anyone, so public address is closed. The next item is our consent agenda items. Is there anything to, if there's nothing to be pulled, we will consider them as approved. Any questions? I think most of them are, all of them are minutes, so I'm assuming we're good with consent items as they are. Next item will be payment of our bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We pay our bills. Next item will be our business part of the meeting and board member reports. Any board member would like to start? Ms. Franklin and I know Ms. Bond couldn't share VSPA November meeting, so I will give them the microphone first.
Thank you.
And then we'll go from there.
The biggest part of my VSPA conference this year was working with the Workforce Tap... Workforce Readiness Task Force. So I attended both sessions, one of which, as you've heard, that Montgomery County, Dr. Myers' presentation for us, which was wonderful, and it was wonderful to hear what was going on in the rest of Virginia. And Carroll County, I was quite taken away with what's happening in Carroll County.
It was really impressive.
Very impressive. During lunch, our task force met, and it was good to be able to meet with the rest of the members and discuss how we move forward with that, and one of the focuses is on apprenticeships. And there was a voice that wasn't at the table, and that was the voice of labor. And understanding how, when you go into an org... a facility and there's a contract in place, and it does not include how you bring in folks from the outside into an apprenticeship program when there are other folks in the building, that's an issue that needs to be worked through. So our international, I U E C W A, is going to be doing a presentation at our meeting next week. We will have a task force meeting before our legislative conference begins. So I'm very, very much looking forward to working through those issues and how we move things forward and prepare folks to be going into the workforce these days because it is most definitely needed. I attended a couple of other workshops. One was dealing with special ed and a program called SOUL. And basically, what this is about is looking at the differences in all of our children and how the best way for them to learn and to meet their services through IEPs. So I have, you know, all the information, so I will pass that along. And then the other workshop I went to, and I'll be honest with you, cannot... It was with the CET readiness workforce, but it really... That wasn't it. So anyways, what I had marked, but it was with a gentleman who was a teacher and was talking about servicing all of our children again and has a child with special needs and understanding how we, quite frankly, truly incorporate all of our children into our school system and making sure that everyone's needs are met. So whether we have a child who's gifted or a child with special needs or everybody in between, understanding, building, as we've talked about years, building those relationships so that we're making sure that we're servicing all of our children in a manner that is going to be the best for them. So two very good workshops that I attended. Well, all of them were good, which is surprising sometimes at VSPA. So I was very, very happy. So that basically is my report.
Thank you.
Can you go? Okay. I actually took some notes. Which, you know, that's one of the things that I was going to kind of say. The biggest problem I have about VSPA is when you're in an exciting session, it's hard not to focus and type and jot down. Then, when you go back to trial, you can look on the website. It's not that easy. You can't find it. You can't pull it up.
It's not always there sometimes.
It's not. And because I actually did, because now, two months later, you know, I'm going, wow, what was that? What was that? You know, and I've looked and hunted and pecked this week trying to find, and it's not there. So, you know, that's going to be, I guess, one of my things, and I might email back and say, you know, go ahead and have them put their webpage right there in the book. So you can pull up the, you know, whatever the presentation it might be. But, you know, I'd already mentioned about the Coach Carter thing, and I liked that because of the success story. I know a lot of people didn't, but I did. But the second keynote, you know, I really kind of pulled from some of the speakers we have. And the Sue Meyer, that was from Apple, which, you know, I don't have an app, other than the iPad, which I love. I don't have an Apple phone, so I kind of was like, oh, this is going to be like a sales pitch kind of deal. But you know, I was really impressed with what she said, with what Apple does with special needs students and just even Alzheimer's and dementia and elderly people about how they've got the medication that they can put the microchip in that was the grain of sand. I mean, that is so most impressive, and I don't think people realize that kind of stuff. I mean, I don't think they really do. And, you know, that the girl had edited the video that she was showing that only had movement of her neck. And they had put... And I mean, and other people may know those things, but you know what? I didn't. So there's got to be a lot of other people out in that crowd that were like me, that was just sitting there going, really? You know? So I was so most impressed with that. And I did, again, try to pull up her... I found out a lot of information about her, but I couldn't find out all the things she had talked about that, you know, to bring. So, but, you know, basically, that's kind of where she was coming from. And she said, you know, Apple does care about people, not just technology. I mean, they care about technology, but it's not about games and having fun on your phone and things like that. So I was really impressed with her demonstration. Then I had also supported Dr. Meyer's session, and I'm going to come back to the workforce readiness and the career and technical education because I did attend another one from Spotsylvania County that it was kind of neat, some of the things they did, because this is a little more on some of the things that I believe, like, as well as all the great things we're doing. But it talked about how they did mock interviews, and the student said, we want more mock interviews. Because I think, and all these years, you know, the 13 years I've been on the Board, I have always been a career and technical education pusher. I've always talked about it. I live it. I've always lived it. I've been successful from the day I graduated at 17 all the way through because my teacher didn't only teach me how to pass the exam, which is needed. We got to have that. But she also taught us, this is what you've got to do if you want to make a living. You got to, you know, dress the part. You've got to be the part. You've got to build your clientele. You've got to stay there and make it. All those things were there. And I'm afraid they're not always there now because there's so many other things we've got to do. But those are some of the fears that I have for career and technical education because when I first got on the Board, and not everybody has to agree with me, and this is just what I see, and like I said, I live it. But when I first got on the Board, we... There was so much negativeness toward career and technical education, and our goal was, let's change that. We want people to look up to, you know, how can we build that? How can we get people to not go, you don't want to do that? You want to go to college? You want to get... You want to make a good living. You don't want to do that. That's nothing. But instead of, it seems like, changing the minds of citizens, it's almost like what we're doing is incorporating things into career and technical education that require furthering education. Now, I might be wrong, but that's what I tend to be seeing. Oh, okay, well, let's put this program in here because, you know, it's got a college based with it, and this builds more enthusiasm and positiveness. Because a lot of the programs that we involve in skills now didn't used to be there, and that's okay, too. But is it the direction it should be going, or is it just building a whole different program? Do you know where I'm coming from? I mean, I love all the things we're doing, but I still don't see the positiveness changing for the original career and technical education vocational programs. I just... Everything that I go to, I just don't see that. You know, and I hope I'm completely wrong. I just... But I see so many people, the very thing that we talked about, that aren't making it. Well, why aren't they making it? Why aren't they being successful? Everybody used to be, you know? Why are we not now? Why are they not making a living? Why are they not being able to stay in it? Why do they have to take an alternate path? You know, so those are the things. I keep looking when I go to these sessions for somebody to tell me what's going on. Why are we not going in that direction? But I was impressed with what they were saying, is they were saying, the people that they brought in were saying, we need to do mock interviews. It's the same thing with job shadowing. You know, and I've said this before, and we've talked about it, and I think you agree. I don't think anybody disagrees. But if I have somebody come job shadow me at the shop, I don't want them standing in a corner and watch me cut hair. I want them to, hey, Ms. Bond, my teacher has taught me how to answer the phone and make appointments. Before I came, I was prepared. You know, I mean, I don't know if that goes against, you know, law of pay. I don't know how that works. But I think it's... And maybe all businesses not... could be that, and I'm not saying they've got to jump in and try to run the shop or anything, but, you know, little things like that. Hey, let me grab a broom and sweep up this. Let me say hello to people that come in the door. I mean, to me, when I think job shadowing, how do they truly know if they're going to like that profession if they don't get a little bite of it? And just watching, in my opinion, is not getting a bite of it. Same thing with following you around all day. I don't want to do this. But you know what? If you said, hey, sit down here with me and help me figure this out. Same thing, I ask you about Abby in event planning. Could she come and see because she thinks she likes it? She don't know until she really does it. You know, so that's what I'm looking for. That's what I'm truly looking to see in the sessions. And I just don't know that I've really seen it, and I may be way off target. I may be getting old and crazy. But like I said, I've done it my whole life, and I just... I don't know. And the people that I talk to, police officers, business owners, corporation leaders, directors, they're telling me the same thing. Students aren't dressing for job interviews correctly. They don't interview right. They don't know how to fill out applications. They don't, you know, they don't realize what, you know, just different things mean.
Basic.
The basics. And you know, that's one of the things that I have to say. My cosmetology teacher, oh, that was part of what she taught us. And we were ready to go out and make a living, you know, not just work, but make a living. But I didn't get off on that, but I truly believe that, and I have always believed in it. So, and they also were saying that they branded what they did, and they called it Workforce Connect, you know, which workforce readiness has their... a big name, but their local community, you know, named what they were doing. And I thought that was kind of a cool idea because people like to put a name on something, you know, to, hey, this is what I'm involved in. I'm involved in, you know, workforce Christiansburg. I don't know. But I just thought that was neat. But the last thing that I had gone to was the Dr. John Draper, which you guys might have heard him at the last day, too. But his was so cool, and he was the one that I really was so excited about talking about because he had so much energy. I mean, and he went through step by step. And last year, I had went to a session about, you know, why are people down on public schools? What is happening? And sometimes it's not just the community. Sometimes it's our employees. Sometimes it's teachers. Sometime... You know, and a lot of people are stagnant and just down on what's happening. And, you know, I am a true public school believer, and I just don't understand why sometimes people aren't. So that's why I chose these sessions. And they kind of said the same thing, you know, we've got to start with the end to be positive, and I think we've done a whole lot of that. But just, you know, in the grocery store, you know, don't say, good lord, what a terrible day I had. I got the worst class in the world. And I got the worst group of kids, and, you know, sitting in the bus line. It was terrible. You know, those things go further than, wow. This is what happened today, you know? And he was kind of saying the same thing because basically, it started in 1957 when, you know, it was really good, but just the way we raise children have changed. And sometimes it's harder... I'm going to use my own kids for an example. There's no way my father would have paid my car insurance until I was 25 years old. So, you know, you want to look at your kids and go, you know? Back in the day, kids were much more self-motivated, you know, than I think now they start... They don't start as at an earliest age as we did maybe when I was a teenager. You know, I mean, I got my life, my everything at 18. Students don't do that now, and he was just saying it's just different. So sometimes parents aren't as positive, and the public school gets the blame. It was just really neat. He had a real interesting thing, and he's like, you know, we love our children just as much, but sometimes we don't understand why some of the things are happening that they're happening. And he had a whole timeline and dated everything. You were there. Wasn't it cool? I mean, it was really good.
Some of the items that he brought to the attention, after you sat and thought about it, you're like, oh, yeah, that makes sense now.
And it just slowly, slowly, slowly turned. And one of the statements he made is, schools are better now, if are as good, if not better, than they've ever been. And I truly believe that. I mean, I see what... And I preach it constantly. You know, I'm like, if you don't know what's happening in school, you need to find out because we are doing phenomenal things. Here in Montgomery County, we are doing phenomenal things. And I just don't believe sometimes people realize it, and you know, you hear me preach that all the time, too. But same thing with him. I pulled up many, many, many speaking engagements he had, but I could not pull up the VSPA one because it was really... It was really good, and I was trying to take notes and listen, but he was on fire. I mean, he was just spurting all these dates out, and I finally gave up because I thought I can't... I can't write and listen. This is not my profession. I can't do this. So, anyway, I'll shut up. And you guys will have to forgive me because once we're finished with this position, my daughter had her wisdom teeth out today, and I'm going to sneak out because she needs her mommy, so.
Hope she gets better. That's no fun to have wisdom tooth out, that, I remember.
Ms. Frackett? Sure. Well, I did my VSPA back in December, so I've done that. But I am planning to attend the legislative conference next week. And also, I am signed up for the Hot Topic Conference in... with Phil in March, so I will report back on those when those happen. Most of what's been going on in my life has to do with the Educational Foundation, so I brought most of that to report on. First of all, since we actually have a couple of teachers here to know this, our seventh, I think, annual poetry contest officially opened today. I got it up on the website before I came. This is the official poster, and I will leave this one here for the School Board Office to put up. We chose as our theme this year, which was a wonderful recommendation by one of our Board members, to honor the 50th anniversary of the moon landing. And I... Because I used to work for NASA, and my husband did, too, I reached out and got permission to actually use their logo and their tagline as our theme. So this year's theme is "The Next Giant Leap," which refers to, of course, what NASA is doing in terms of going to the moon and now trying to go to Mars. And then I also pulled in a little favor from a friend of ours. This year, in addition to the first-place contestant getting a nicer iPad than in the past, they will also be getting a signed copy of the book Chasing Space from our friend and former astronaut Leland Melvin. This is actually our signed copy here. So they'll get something that looks just like this. All four winners will do that. Will receive that as well. So that is up on our website for... to share, and we'll be getting posters out. And we'll... As always, we send a few paper copies for students who may not be able to print at home or submit electronically at home. We want to make sure we have those available for students who need that. So we will get those to our front offices as well as a poster for each school. Another exciting announcement that the Educational Foundation had in December was that we were awarded the Chamber of Commerce Nonprofit of the Year Humanitarian Award. So we were very, very proud of that and very excited, especially for having just been around, you know, essentially recreated in just seven years. So we were really honored to receive that award. And then, of course, we held our grant ceremony, award ceremony back in December and gave out another $30,000 plus in grants plus an additional, I believe, $6,000, $7,000 to programs here at MCPS. And we announced that this year, we actually reached our half-million-dollar donation mark. And of that, about half of that has gone over the years to teacher... directly to teacher grants in the classrooms. And then the rest, minus our small administrative fees, which obviously aren't much since we don't have any paid staff, has gone to programs such as the STEM Academy, the Work-Based Learning Program, Christiansburg Institute, the Personal Mi-Fi Devices, things like that, that we've supported, winning choices throughout the years. And we were also able to announce the establishment of two independent endowment funds that will permanently fund a grant each from now on. So those will be started in 2019 as well. So a lot of wonderful things going on with the foundation.
Thank you. Appreciate it, and congratulations. I know, I think I did retweet when we received the award and the picture, but, you know, congratulations again. It's a wonderful accomplishment, and I'm so proud. The foundation is doing so great. And I know all our teachers are appreciating, and all the students are appreciating.
Yeah, we have three grant recipients currently passing right back there.
Yeah, it is wonderful. Any other Board members like to jump in?
Yes, I need to report on the safety meeting. The safety meeting meets every month. Is that correct, Ms. Diggs? We meet monthly? Four times a year. And it includes the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, the town of Christiansburg, and the town of Blacksburg Police Departments. And in that, Ms. Diggs reported that we now have that anonymous reporting system, and that had been used 268 times, right? In our pilot program. But only a fourth of those did we have to really follow up and respond to. Some of them were just accidental entries. We are seeing an increase in threat assessment reports, and we feel like that's likely because of the education of the students and the staff on mental health so that they're much more aware of it. And of course, mental health is also being targeted. being taught as part, eh, taught as part of our curriculum in middle school PE classes. Um, there was also some discussion on SROs, and, uh, one thing that was pointed out was that, um, if the, if both the SROs in our outlying, uh, schools, as in Auburn, I mean, Auburn High School and Auburn Middle School happened to be in court that day, that essentially leaves that entire area, um, and those three schools without any, without any coverage. So, it was mentioned, um, or discussed, the possibility of what's called a roaming SRO, um, who could not only help with when the officers are in a, in, in court, but they could also provide, you know, extra help at certain schools, um, especially Montgomery Central, where the Town of Christiansburg requested some extra help. Wait a minute, let me see if that's it, hold on. Um, one second. Uh, we also, um, talked a little bit about, um, the mental health, um, disconnect, so when a student, um, is sent, or the NRCCS, um, NRVCS, um, admits them, then when it's time for them to return back to school, we don't always know that, um, we'd like to know that so that there's a, we could set up a transition path in place, but that doesn't always happen, unfortunately. And so, um, that, that's a concern that a lot of people shared at the, at the safety meeting. I think that was about it, we may, you know, we did talk about some physical things, like on, at some of our schools, like Margaret Beeks and Harding is not having that extra barrier there like we do in our newer schools, um, like we did, you know, just put in place in Falling Branch, uh, that, that was one of the things that they reported in their, that the officers reported in their, um, in their assessment, was that, um, we need to look at, you know, what we could do for that. That was about it.
Thank you, Ms. Graham, any questions regarding the safety?
I have one more thing, I forgot. Uh, so on Friday, I attended our teaching tolerance workshop with our, some of our teachers, and this was, um, different from most workshops that I've been to, related to teaching tolerance, also shows, social justice, um, and it was just fascinating to see how, and it just makes sense, how you incorporate a social justice, justice lens into everything that you teach. And it just makes sense, you know, repetitive, over and over again, and sooner or later, you know, kids understand, this is the lens that I use with the rest of my life too. So it was, um, I enjoyed it very much, and the energy from, uh, the teachers, and actually seeing how their kind of brains work, you know, was interesting too, so I enjoyed that.
Thank you. Mr. Chabaka?
I attended the MCEF Awards Management, um, in December, and that was a...
And served as our official photographer, thank you.
Yes.
Like to see the pictures.
Yeah, uh, me too.
Me too.
Um, but that, that was a, a really nice event, and always great to see all the, the, the sponsors and the teachers that win the awards, and just to hear about all the different, um, projects, you know, one, one thought that I had, and that I have, I feel like every year is, you know, I always feel like we should do a, kind of a, I guess what we call in our industry, a postmortem on, on these projects, and see which ones of them are truly, um, you know, the most successful, that really have the most impact, biggest...
Assess, kind of an assess?
Yeah, like, biggest bang for the buck, you know, and especially during budget season to kind of look at, you know, what kinds of things do we want to then pull in and incorporate in our curriculum elsewhere in the county through our own funds rather than, you know...
And we do require final reports, so be welcome to share any of those at any time.
Yeah, okay, it would be, I don't, yeah, it would be interesting to, that's something I, I feel like maybe as a board, we should think about how we would incorporate something like that in. Um, and then other than that, I did get a chance to meet, um, with, uh, Tommy last month, and just catch up with him on just general operations stuff, and hopefully you guys have a chance to do that, uh, too, but I thought it was really informative, and as always, I'm thrilled to have, uh, Tommy on board.
Thank you. Ms. Barton?
Uh, yes, um, I was planning on possibly trying to head to Richmond myself next week, however, I was told by my husband that he is going, so I will be bypassing this one and trying to hit it next year. I did want to say that I was out of town a lot over the holiday, and I was dealing with two illnesses, so I didn't get to do a whole lot, but I do have some information that probably maybe should be announced during the announcements and information, but I'm going to go ahead and, um, mention these. I know we've got a lot of high school curriculum nights coming up for the high schools, I know that Christiansburg High Schools is this Thursday on the tenth, and that's from five thirty to seven thirty, and I know Eastmont's is Thursday, January the twenty-third, that's going to be from six thirty to eight thirty. Um, I tried to find Blacksburg's and Auburn's, but I did not, was not able to see that on their, I don't know if they've got that posted on their cap, do they have it?
We have it.
Yep.
We can send them to you.
Okay, great, um, so I just was going to remind anybody who has upcoming freshmen, as I do, um, those are right around the corner, so was gonna, gonna bring that up. I was also going to give some information out on my district, Shaw School Middle School is having their eighth grade curriculum night on Thursday, January seventeenth, from six to eight thirty, and that's going to be at Eastmont High School. Um, Shaw School Middle School's middle school night is going to be on Thursday, January twenty-fourth, from six to seven thirty, and I did want to mention that, um, our bands from all of our schools are having two big things coming up, all district middle school is going to be this coming Saturday, I believe, um, the twelfth, and that's going to be at Fieldsdale Collinsdale, that's going to be from eight to four, and then all county band, which is going to be, um, everyone, that's going to be Friday, the, January the eighteenth, at Christiansburg High School from nine to three. So we've got all of our band students who are going to try out for both of those, so we've got a lot of stuff, quote unquote, going on this month, so just, just some reminders.
Could you give me that Eastmont High School curriculum time again?
Yes.
The twenty-third?
This is for the high school?
Uh-huh.
Yes, it's going to be January twenty-third from six thirty to eight thirty.
Thank you.
That's, uh, on a Thursday.
Got it.
Can I just share a Google Doc with all of you?
Yeah, that'd be lovely.
That would be wonderful.
Are you doing?
Thank you, Ms. Barton.
Thank you.
He's quicker than I am.
And the last, lastly, I think I did, um, attend a bunch of pa, uh, passion fairs, passion project fairs, uh, like Dr. Meyer mentioned, and I'm really enjoying, and not, nothing repeats, you know, every kid has a different passion, and I don't think it, it differs from school to school, and I don't think you see anything similar after all the, I think I did one, two, three, four school passion fairs, and I think on my schedule, three, four more coming up this, uh, this month, but I, I, I really like it, and also I attended the tolerance workshop morning session, um, like Ms. Franklin mentioned, and it was interesting to see, um, how excited the teachers are, they asked a lot of questions, they are hoping to get, you know, more workshops like that to, to come, and they were all, you know, this wasn't a, you know, forced, uh, PE per se, but everybody was very excited to attend and eager to learn, and it was an interesting lens to look, um, every subject, it's not like, uh, history or, um, uh, social sciences, uh, language arts, but you can apply that lens, tolerance lens to, you know, when you're looking at studying butterflies, or, or calculating the area of a triangle, which was interesting to see, uh, the concept is pretty, pretty cool, I was happy to attend. That probably wraps up our, our board reports on this, anything else you, I will get, nothing forgetting?
Ms. Graham, um, I have a question, just since I'm going to be sneaking out, um, and if it's inappropriate for me to ask right now, it's, it's okay, do we have anybody that works directly with the ACEs program?
With ACEs?
ACEs, mhm.
There's the liaison in each of the, um, high schools that is employed by New River.
Okay.
They actually, they, their office is actually there in the building.
They are the one encouraging the kids.
Yeah, she's someone that you could speak to freely, or is that, okay, the only reason I ask is because some, I've spoke with some of you, my aunt that I help with is ninety-two, and she broke her femur, well, she's in Crungy, I can't never say that correctly, Center at Warm Hearth, and, you know, when I've been going every night, and she, she can't get on her leg, and it's the little things like, honey, I can't fix, I can't work this remote to this TV, and, you know, could you close the blinds? And I thought, you know, when Abby did her, um, eighty hours of community service, at the time, the only thing they were offering was fire rescue and school systems, and I'm sure they've come up with some new things since then, but wow, wouldn't that be a great program for our students to get involved in? And I understand there's stipulations with, um, elderly care and senior homes that they would have to overcome, and, and probably, you know, it's, it's probably a very, uh, security type situation, but, you know, so many people are so afraid of retirement centers and nursing homes, and they don't want somebody to come in and feed them, they don't want somebody to change their, they just want somebody to say hello.
Yeah.
And sit down and watch Jeopardy with them, or, honey, you gotta leave, can't you just watch Wheel of Fortune with me? Just visit.
Somebody to talk to.
I have learned so much in two weeks, and I'm so ashamed of myself for it being this long to have learned it, but I can go and talk to her then, if that's okay, or...
Well, I, I'll tell you who, um, for the volunteer aspect of it, I would speak to Chief Wilson.
Okay, is that who, I just didn't want to overstep my boundaries.
Yeah, he's the, he is the sort of official volunteer coordinator, he's coordinating all that, the thirty-one and...
And if you can't get him, you can definitely talk to Angie Covey.
Well, and I know Angie, so I didn't know if she was where I needed to start, if I need to start here, there, or what, but it was just a brainstorm, so...
She would definitely be open to responding to you.
Yep. Okay.
Before you leave, because this, I, I just remember, this is going to be in a later part, but while you're here, just to give you some results, um, in fact, this is going to be the program studies, I think, presentation, but...
Right.
Just wanted to give you a heads up on this, I, I told you, we did the, uh, surveys on the core cadet interests for our students, and, um, pretty amazing, the response, um, our current, uh, A through eleventh, which would be next year's high schoolers, uh, we asked basically yes, maybe, no, okay? We had two hundred and eighty-two that said yes.
Wow.
We had seven hundred and thirty-eight said maybe.
Wow.
Uh, just with the two eighty-two that said yes, it would be the largest program in Montgomery County Public Schools, the first year, without even the growth, and so, and it was, it was, you know, across the high schools, uh, the yeses, thirty-seven at Auburn, thirty-seven in Eastmont, hundred and five at Blacksburg, a hundred and three at, uh, Christiansburg.
Wow.
Maybes, eighty at Auburn, maybes at Blacksburg, it's three hundred and twenty-one, Christiansburg, two forty-five, and ninety-two at Eastmont, that's...
That's almost there.
Wow, absolutely.
So, almost half of Eastmont is, half of the school is interested in the program, so, uh...
Yeah, that's great.
So, uh, what, what we're doing is, you know, and of course, it's, it's also, at the end of the day, based on, kids have to actually sign up for it, and then we have to be able to, to staff it.
Oh, wow, I'm thrilled.
Too, so, but, um, and, uh, so we, it will be the program studies, kids will be able to sign up for it, and then we, we can staff it through, after the budget, uh, we'll continue to move forward and, and, and creating it, and, uh, but, uh, it's, it's pretty amazing the results, uh, it will be our biggest program by far in the school division, so anything else?
For Ms. Barton.
Yeah, so...
See, for me, that says, I'm sorry, that, and I've always kind of thought this, students may act like they don't want to be guided, but they truly do want guidance, you know, they truly want to be, um, you know, sometimes in a program that helps them learn how to shape their lives and structure, and students like that.
Well, it's leadership and students, you know, it's, it teaches students how to be leaders.
That's right, it is.
I mean, it, it really is, you know, we talked to the cadets at Virginia Tech, and in, in fact, most of their coursework is on leadership, what that looks like, how to be a leader, and, um, and I think that's something that is missing in many of our, much by use today, is the ability to step forward and be a leader in our, in our community. And, um, so, yeah, so anyway.
Very good.
Well, since you bought up the ACE program, I'll just save the date thing, on April the sixth, there will be a fundraiser for the ACE program of five K, really, so, uh, get your shoes out, you know, be ready to engage and help raise the funds that the community needs to raise to help match that program to keep it going, um, because it's not always a guarantee that our supervisors will, you know, keep funding that very needed, important program. So we, as a community, are coming together to help make that happen.
Cool.
And engaging our schools to, you know, build teams to be a part of that too, so have our children understand they need to run for their education, so...
Do we have any flyers and things like that, will they make them out?
They're coming.
It is coming, there's, there's a website, I think already...
Think our kids are actually working, creating them, or I'm working through, right?
Yeah, there's website and link and, you know, if you can...
Everything I've heard's been positive.
Think of big sponsors, just let them know.
That's great, I already started talking to my kids about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's just, it is.
Okay, I'm going to sneak.
Thank you, Ms. Pam.
Thank you.
Next item will be adopting our, um, textbook.
Okay, uh, so tonight we're asking you to approve textbooks, uh, for a new probability and statistics elective, uh, Ms. Wallace here, um, if you have any questions, um, in regards to that.
May I have a motion to approve the math textbooks as presented?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, and second, any questions, board members? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve our textbooks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wallace, for being here tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next are legislative priorities, uh, for approval of the capital conferences next week, and we'll, uh, meet with our state legislators, uh, about educational priorities, the proposed legislative priorities were presented the December fourth board meeting. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the documents so we can provide them to our elected representatives next week.
May I have a motion to approve our legislative priorities as presented?
Second.
Second.
Any questions regarding them?
Uh, no, no questions, but, uh, just a, a comment that, um, something to keep an eye out for from a legislative point of view, is there, there are a couple issues, I think, on the, um, on the governor's school side, that the, that the, all the state governor's schools are, I think, trying to get in sync on, so, at the last meeting, I asked if we should take action, and I was encouraged, we were encouraged to wait on that until, you know, they get, um, until we get everybody on the same page, so that we're all kind of advocating for the same thing, so, I know this is a draft, I just kind of want to throw that out there, that there might be something for, um, to be added to this from the governor's school side.
When it comes, yeah. Sound good?
So, uh, do we send this to them ahead of time, or do we just give it to them when we arrive?
Both.
Both?
We take it physically too, but I think we let them ahead of time know too. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And our legislative priorities approved.
Okay, uh, next I'd ask Ms. Quinzenberry to come up, or is, Mr. Paulie, you're starting this thing? Okay, Mr. Paulie first, and Ms. Quinzenberry.
All right, it's Ms. Quinzenberry, but I was going to introduce Ms. Quinzenberry and Ms. Lyons, they are our lead teachers, uh, for fine arts, if they would come up. Ms. Quinzenberry, um, is the lead teacher for music, and Ms. Lyons is the lead teacher for visual arts. Uh, as you know, Ms. Quinzenberry actually is now the assistant principal, uh, in two of our elementary schools, and so she's had to step down, so this is her last time that she'll be before you in this capacity, but she and Carrie have done tremendous work in creating, uh, the criteria for a fine arts diploma seal, this would be similar to the work-ready diploma seal that we have in this county, it's unique to Montgomery County schools, and we have established all the criteria, we've been working on it for quite some time, actually, they've done all the work, and, um, and, and Ms. Lyons will also speak to, uh, her plans for designing the actual seal itself, so I'm going to let these ladies talk to you about the specifics, thank you.
Let me say this first, uh, Ms. Quinzenberry, uh, just had a conversation with you at the dinner table tonight, uh, my second grader says, hey, we got a new assistant principal at school, I can't say her name, but she said, just say Ms. Q.
It's way easier.
I've known Ms. Q twenty years now, all right, it's, has been always Ms. Q, and we're so excited.
Yeah, very excited to have her as assistant principal of those schools, do a wonderful job, so...
Well, I'm going to put my other hat on for a second and be an arts advocate, so we are so happy, as you guys know, because you always have supported the arts in this county, that there are some children who come to school because of the arts, and there are some students whose passion is the arts, and that's what they do in all their spare time, so just being able to recognize that has been really exciting for Ms. Lyons and I, that we are piloting this, um, program this year, we're really excited. So kind of the process that happened was, um, we worked with... process that happened was, we worked with the teachers and with Mr. Paulie and Dr. Graham to try to really narrow down what we needed to do. And one of the things that we really wanted to focus on was, how do we make this worth getting for all students, but accessible for all students in every strand? And that was a challenge that we needed to face as to what's available in those different strands. So, what we came up with was some really tough requirements in each individual category, but giving a broad enough base that whatever path they decided to take, whether it's theater, or visual arts, or music, or choir, and they can combine those paths, can get them to that point. So, that's, that's really what we were trying to do. So, if you look at just some of the music and theater ones, you'll see that they need to do some auditioning and some participating, and that that can happen in conjunction with everything. So, our students from Eastmont could participate in all county. We've got students from Blacksburg who are going to all state and so forth. So, we're trying to make it accessible to all levels of students.
And from the visual arts side, we're really just trying to encourage students to put their art out there, to let it be seen, to get some feedback from some very tough competitions. We actually just received our feedback from Scholastic in Montgomery County, who's well represented again this year, Blacksburg High School, Christiansburg High School, Blacksburg Middle, and this year we have Auburn Middle represented as well. Super excited about that. And then just really putting our work out there to the local shows, to encourage the students to see what a art-rich community we do live in and how well-supported we are, and to let them get a little bit of recognition for their hard work as well. We've also gone ahead and invited all of our high schoolers to participate in an art contest so that the seal is of their own design. We've shown them examples of some of the other seals that are currently available to them, and so they have until the end of this month to send in some designs to see what we can use. They're very, very excited about the possibility of, can I get this seal? I think I've got all these things. What's it gonna look like? Maybe it'll be my design. So, they're really excited about this possibility.
That's awesome. Long overdue.
Yes. I actually was going through the list, and I'm going, okay, well, I had that, and I had that. But I surely, you know, would have liked to have had the opportunity, because I took four years of art, would like to have had the opportunity to challenge myself, you know, with the different competitions and different levels that you have here. So, this is, this is just wonderful, wonderful.
I might have three crying kids. Well, they are not at home anymore, but they are three crying adults living out of, out of state, so much wishing to get this fine arts seal back in the days, like Ms. Franklin said, because they did, all my kids did just fine arts, in all shapes and forms, and so they would have probably loved to be appreciated. And one little thing, I don't know if anybody noticed, who won the doodle for Google. If you have seen today's Google, it is a seven-year-old second grader from Foster, Virginia, won the Google for doodle contest, and it is absolutely amazing, very, very animated, and it is Dino, Dino for something, I think, Dino for Google, Google for Dino. I mean, you, yeah, you have to see. So, you know, art goes, you know, so many shapes and ways and so many opportunities out there. So, I'm truly, truly excited that we have this opportunity for the kids.
Can I ask just a clarifying question on this, and I certainly agree with the sentiments of my colleagues here. On the, the section two, I was looking through that, and having not done too much of this stuff myself, going through high school, is this kind of designed to take kids who are maybe are already doing some of these things? And, you know, you mentioned trying to get them to get their art out there. Are we, is this designed to kind of, you know, help push kids to do a little bit more if they want the, the art, the seal, or is it more to kind of reward the kids that already do all of this stuff? Or is it a little bit of both?
I think it, I think it is definitely a little bit of both.
Okay.
Especially, it was so important to us that all schools have the ability to have students receive this seal. And so, some schools, I think the participation is already very high, but we're hoping to encourage it at some of our smaller schools so that they'll take advantage.
And it certainly seems within reach, the
Absolutely.
So.
Yes, I remember back when they changed the requirements, where you had to have the CTE track or the fine arts track. And I asked Dr. Meyer, we have a CTE seal, why don't we have a fine arts seal?
That's a very good point, yeah.
Kids who choose to go the other tracks. I'm very excited to see that we do now. And like Ms. Karan, I had a child too, who's gonna go, why couldn't I have had that? Because she did all four years.
Crying, crying kids at home.
I agree with what I'm on to though, and said, do you think that's feasible for what you have done?
Yeah, absolutely. So, thank you so much for all the work you've put into it. We really appreciate it. And excited to see that final seal.
Great job. Excellent.
Thank you.
And with that seal designed, it'd be great to share that with our board.
Yes, that will be nice to see.
That'd be wonderful. All right, next, the Program of Studies. Mr. Paulie?
I thought it would take about an hour to go through each and every page of the Program of Studies with you in detail.
Perfect.
No.
Nope.
I did send to you ahead of time through, I sent to you ahead of time through Board Docs, the complete Program of Studies. There have been a few minor tweaks to it, some changes in course codes, and some errors that were found, little revisions here and there. But what you were sent through Board Docs is quite complete. And then I sent you a summary sheet to show the new things and the revisions that we made. All told, we have about 11 brand-new courses that are being offered, which is amazing. That does not include changes that have been made to world history. If you notice, there were some changes made to AP World History. The College Board no longer has just AP World. They've broken it down into AP World Ancient and AP World Modern. And so, I don't necessarily consider those new courses, it's just a breakup of the original world history. And then, we made some other revisions to courses and some course offerings and pathways, and those were primarily done in CTE to expand course offerings, not just so we have more courses, but to make courses, to have more equity of access to the pathways at all four schools, most significantly in cybersecurity and in health and medical sciences. And I believe Mr. Husband spoke to both of those when he was up here last time. And then, as Dr. Meyer said earlier, we had an overwhelming response. A little over 1,000 students in grades eight through 11 said either yes or maybe to the Corps of Cadets program, so that's also included. So, it may be a little bit difficult to find without a search, because it's in the Career and Technical Education section. However, it, if you just do Ctrl+F, you know, the kids all know how to navigate that stuff. I don't necessarily either. And we also added information on the seals. We figured you would really like the fine arts seal, so we put it in there and hope that you will approve that and the Program of Studies next time you're together. But also, the work-ready seal that was in place last year, but not in time to make it into the Program of Studies, is also in there. So, we just continue to add some things and make some revisions to make this better and better, working with the principals and the guidance counselors to make sure everything matches exactly what's offered at each school and what aligns with teacher licensure. Those are some of the challenges that we have in creating this document and making it accurate. But the 11 new courses are the most exciting, especially those two pathways in CTE and the, the junior ROT, the Junior Corps of Cadets. So, if you have any questions?
Yeah, the change in the AP, being former AP testing quarter, does that require you to purchase new textbooks?
I didn't even think of that. I don't know.
I'd like to know.
Okay.
Of course, they love to make money on that stuff. Not to mention they now have another test they can charge kids for.
That's right. And you don't have to take them both. I do know that.
Right, right, but still.
Because the other, I wondered when they were going to do that someday. I mean, because the second one
It's a huge amount of information.
The modern just is like, you know, 15 something to, to the current, to the present. Well, the present just keeps growing, so. So, they're recommending kids take the, the modern, and they can take the ancient if they are interested in the full breadth of world history. But I'll check on the textbook.
That's great.
They are two separate tests.
Yes, I'm sure. And two separate fees.
They may have alternative
Probably over $100 now.
Anybody else have any questions?
It's such a user-friendly, very eye-pleasing document. That's all I can say. It's, it's so nice.
And we hope before the end of the school year, we'll have a middle school one for you.
That will be awesome.
Process of working on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll ask that to be approved at the next meeting.
We'll have it next week, or we will have it beginning of next week? Okay.
Oh, I mean, we'd appreciate the approval, because kids are already signing up.
I was just, that's why I, you know, that's why I was asking, since this is back-to-back two meetings. Yeah, we don't, we don't have to obviously wait till next month. That's good. The next item is unfinished business. Any board members have any unfinished business that will matter to discuss further? Hearing none. How about a new business? Do we have any new business that?
I'll just mention childcare in our area. I think that was, it really came to our attention during the discussion around school start change, and the lack of, and the expense, and, you know, everything we know about childcare. And just, you know, kind of feeling around that area to see, is there somewhere that the school system needs to help with a push for this, because it affects our children, our, their families, our employees, and how we do business at the school district? So, just putting that out there, at some point, we might want to discuss that.
Do you mean, are you referring to like before and after-school care for school-aged children, or, you know, daycare for preschool, you know?
Or all of the above?
All of the above.
Yeah. Childcare, period.
Yeah.
However it looks.
I mean, if that is something we're interested in, I would highly suggest bringing in Bethany Mott, the director for ABCs, who, of course, that's what she's trying to do. I don't know how many people are aware, but the Board of Supervisors did drop their support for ABCs last year. So, they're no longer getting financial support from the Board of Supervisors for that program. And it wasn't a lot of money, but they, I think it was like $13,000 they were asking.
Yeah, it wasn't a lot of money.
That's disappointing.
I know Dr. Graham, she attends the regular meetings for the ABC Board on our behalf, and she could probably share some information at the meeting too, as to what's happening at some point.
Put it on the agenda at some point.
You have anything you want to share now, Dr. Mott?
I didn't mean to prolong the meeting. I just
That's okay.
Good summary.
I do attend those meetings, and soon Emily Altizer will be attending in my place. We're gonna switch in March, since I won't be here next year. Emily has also been very involved with the ABC Board and with the other boards that meet as a result of that. The ABC Board in particular has secured lots of scholarships for preschool students, and they're mostly focused on infants to school-aged children, rather than before and after school care. But they have secured scholarships through donations from businesses and individuals as well, to try to help families who cannot afford the childcare in the area. They also have worked on bringing new childcare programs to the, to the county, and have been successful. There's one getting ready to open up in Blacksburg, and another that they think may be in the works. So, they are making some gains. But when we compare Montgomery County to places like Charlottesville, we certainly lack in the, in the availability of childcare for those preschool-aged children. So, it is a serious concern. The program did secure some extra funding from Virginia Tech, so ABC Board does plan to continue, and they're very actively seeking to increase the slots for childcare, to increase the availability of different locations, as well as to support parents who are having financial trouble.
Awesome.
And they were also working, I think, on helping people become certified to be providers and reach the number of providers.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that.
Especially home care providers, who kind of do it independently.
And they're working along with Smart Beginnings to make sure that not only do you have childcare, but they're looking at the quality of childcare.
Quality of childcare, yeah.
So, Smart Beginnings is another agency which, which works with childcare agencies to basically certify them, accredit them, so to speak. And, and that's kind of twofold. First, you need the childcare.
Yep.
But you do want the childcare to be of quality as well. So, but that makes it a little bit more expensive. And then, to pay the employees is another problem, because there, there's a huge amount of turnover simply because the pay is so low. Any other questions? And glad to set you up with Bethany, as we talked about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, our announcements and informations. Any announcements and informations for members?
I have one kind of sad item. I regret to inform the board that on December 23rd, we lost Susan West Marmegast to cancer. She was a parent and a strong advocate for our schools. Most recently, she was the president of the organization that kind of formed around 2008, I think, or 2007, to help keep all the schools open, and was, I think, instrumental at, at taking an approach that was unifying to the county, to really try to keep, you know, advocate for more money, keep all the schools open, instead of, you know, pitting, you know, one community against the other. And I think that was a good, a good show of leadership. And I think that, you know, she kind of inspired me to run for this office a few years ago. So, we will miss her, keep her family and friends, and our thoughts and prayers.
Any other announcements?
You can announce Dialogue on Race?
I'm sorry?
Dialogue on Race, isn't that coming up?
Yeah, so Dialogue on Race will convene our winter summit, January the 26th, at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Christiansburg Middle School. And we will also be doing a Coffee with Cops, starting at 9:00 AM. So, this was a carryover from our summer program that focused on law enforcement. That went just wonderfully. So, we're gonna continue that that morning. So, everyone is invited, and hope you will attend. This year, it's, focuses on limited presence.
What was the date on that?
Christiansburg Middle School.
A date?
Oh, January 26th.
26th. And if you go to Dialogue on Race website, there's an online register, just for the headcount purposes, because they provide, you know, lunch.
Lunch.
I have one announcement, although, you know, I probably will keep announcing since it is in March, but March 20, the Lifelong Learning Institute, Virginia Tech, is going to hold a session on how we are doing in public education. And Dr. Meyer, Dr. Graham, Mr. Kranz, and others, Mr. Paulie, and I think Mr. Husband as well, gonna be attending in a panel-shaped questions and answers. And after giving a, you know, description of what we are doing in Montgomery County Public Schools, there will be questions and answers from the audience. That LLI is, if you're not aware, is 50 and over individuals. They provide many opportunities for learning and growing, from gardening to how to do your banking to
Dialogue on Race did a presentation.
Dialogue on Race did the presentation as well, which is wonderful. There is always a great attendance. This one is gonna be at the Warm Heart Center for Events, and it is on the 20th at 9 o'clock, 9:00 to 10:30 AM. But I will, I will keep repeating as time gets closer.
And I actually have two announcements regarding chamber events coming up. Thursday morning, they're doing their State of Our County, it's Exit Issues, but it's basically a State of the County address. I believe Mr. Meadows and Mr. Tuck will be doing that, and I will be attending that. And then, in February, Dr. Meyer and I will be doing one on schools, and Education Foundation is actually sponsoring that one, so we'll be talking about the Education Foundation as well.
That's great.
I don't remember the date on that one. February, it's on your calendar.
Maybe 7th?
Yeah, 7th or 8th, that sounds right. It's that first, first Thursday, so, first of the full week.
That's wonderful. Any other announcements and information? None. The next is the Agenda Prep. You'll see our meeting times and days. The next week is January 15, and then we have regularly scheduled February meetings, and one additional tentative at this time, February Budget Meeting. Any questions regarding that? February meetings, and one additional tentative at this time, February Budget Meeting. Any questions regarding that?
On February nineteenth, I will not be in attendance at the meeting. I may attempt to try to phone in for the budget vote, but it will depend on where I am at the Charlotte Airport at the time. I may be, I may be on a plane, and I might be in the airport by then, so. We'll play it by ear, Mr. Ray.
We'll see how it works. Hopefully it will work. Are we ready? And the next item will be the closed session. May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel matter and thirteen student matters, as authorized by Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one of Code of Virginia?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we are in closed session.